Langley Council, the next item on the agenda is presentations. And we have a local area service program presentation by staff for an update on that. Mr. Welfing, welcome here.
Your worship, this is in support of the report that's on council's agenda as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, your worship and members of council. For this presentation this afternoon is to present the information on the local area service policy review, further to the report on the agenda for item F1. As a review of items that will be covered this afternoon, these include a review of the background, as well as an overview of the local area service process, a number of policy considerations, particularly with regards to panhandle lots, temporary property exemptions, and the apportionment of costs that are recovered through this program, a number of housekeeping updates, and as well as an opportunity for questions. The current policy was adopted in 2014. That was a fairly major policy revision for local area service policy, with a number of housekeeping updates in 2016 as part of the overall policy review. In September of 2015, council received a number of delegations that contained questions on how costs were apportioned through the local area service policy, as well as the ability for temporary property exemptions. These questions were referred to staff for review of options and implications. Finally, also in 2017, council passed a motion with regards to the calculations for panhandle lots, and whether they are apportioned too low of an amount in consideration of the overall project costs for local area service projects. So as a background to the local area service process, when requests are received from residents in the community for a local area service project, staff complete a technical feasibility study. It's the first item. Items that will be looked at are the profile of the main in question, velocity and pressure Assuming a successful feasibility study, the proponent will complete a preliminary petition to determine the level of support for this type of service. With a successful preliminary petition, then an official petition is completed. These are mailed ballots from the township to the benefiting property owners for the proposed local area service. The threshold for passing the official petition process is at least 50% support. In addition, the 50% support has to represent at least 50% of the assessed value of the land and improvements of the parcels in question. Once the official petition process is completed, the next step is the local area service bylaw authorizing construction of the project. The next step is the design, the detailed design of the project, and then the construction. And finally, the last step is the cost recovery of the service itself. So one of the policy considerations that was asked about was for panhandle lots, specifically with the concern that panhandle lots, or those lots that where the bulk of the lot is behind another lot, pay too small of a percentage of the overall project cost. So in the map above on the slide here, lots one and lot four would be a panhandle lot whereby the bulk of the lot is in behind another lot. The township utilizes the formula shown for calculating taxable frontage and how to apportion the costs for each individual property. While I won't go through the algebra for the taxable frontage formula, this formula does take into account the frontage of a parcel, the rearage of a parcel, and the total perimeter of the parcel to produce a value that we call taxable frontage of the parcel. The cost for each individual parcel is based on this taxable frontage. The formula is intended to address parcels that are not rectangular, or parcels that have a different shape, so as to present some way of normalizing the frontage calculations. There is an example shown here. So in this example, lots one and lots four would be panhandle lots. And for the purposes of this example, we'll assume the project cost is $300,000, as shown in the bottom of the table. So for lot one, the frontage would be 13 meters, the rearage would be 53 meters, and the perimeter in this case is 476 meters, resulting in a taxable frontage of 40 meters. So once all the taxable frontages are calculated for all the properties in question, in this case, the total taxable frontage is 226 meters, as shown in the bottom of the slide, we then calculate the value of the cost per meter of taxable frontage. So it's the $300,000 divided by 226 meters produces the $1,327 per meter of taxable frontage. So in this example, lot one, which has a taxable frontage of 40 meters, multiplied by the 1327, so the cost per meter of taxable frontage, their total commuted cost would be $52,500. So the purpose of this example is to present a comparison of what the panhandle lot pays versus the lot that's directly in front of the panhandle. So lot one, the commuted cost was approximately $52,500, and lot two, the lot directly in front of it, was $56,000. Similarly, for lot four and lot five, the cost for lot four would be $50,500, and the cost for lot five would be $58,500. As shown in this example, the cost for panhandle lots is slightly smaller than the lots in front of them. In this example, they're about 10 to 15% less for the panhandle lots. However, these lots do have approximately 75% smaller frontages. What's not shown in here, what's not included in this example is the connection cost. So the cost for the local area service includes the main itself. So if in this example it was a water main, that would include the cost of the water main fronting the property. The connection costs for each individual property are billed as actuals. Property owners are not required to connect, so they have the option of connecting, they're not required to connect. They do however have to pay the local area service charge for the water main installation if that's what was being built. So for these panhandle lots, they do incur a higher connection cost because they would have to bring their connection to the bulk of their lot, which is typically located in behind the lot directly in front of them. Based on this review, staff are not proposing any changes to the formula to account for panhandle lots. One of the other policy considerations that came up was the ability to exempt property owners from being a part of the local area service on a hardship basis. This was part of the delegation request from 2015. It has also been asked of staff a number of times, as we have gone through these projects multiple times as well. The applicable legislation within the community charter does not provide a mechanism for temporary property exemptions. Staff also reviewed this option with legal counsel, and it was recommended not to proceed with providing an exemption at this time based on the following rationale. So those rationale being that there's no technical way to exclude a property from the list of benefiting properties. So for example, if a water main was being constructed along a roadway, all the properties that now have frontage to the water main would be deemed benefiting, it wouldn't make sense or wouldn't be defensible to exclude a mid-block property from the list of benefiting properties. Number two, it was determined there'd be a very difficult way, or a difficult way to come up with a fair and objective way of administering such an exemption process. Staff would also anticipate that there'd be a number of applications that would be received by both staff and council to try and have properties exempted from the overall service. And finally, if a property is exempted, and then later either the ownership changes or the ownership decides that they do want to connect, it would not be easy to include that property within the local area service whereby all the other property owners would be paying for that portion of the service at a later date. The other options that are available for property owners that are concerned with the financial hardship of a local area service project, option one is that the cost is typically amortized over 20 years for the project. So these projects are billed on the tax notices, but they are billed over 20 years typically. Property owners have the ability to pay off the cost ahead of time should they choose to do so. The other option for property owners is the provincial property tax deferment program. These local area service taxes are eligible for deferment under the same criteria as that provincial property tax deferment program. The next question was with regards to how costs are apportioned to property owners for these types of projects. So there's two significant frameworks that are typically utilized, or typically looked at, when determining how costs are apportioned to different property owners. The first is on the basis of cost of construction. So this would mean that properties where cost more to build past, or properties that are typically larger, they would pay a higher portion of the cost because it costs the overall project a higher amount to build past that property. The other framework, or the other basis that could be utilized, is based on the benefit that's received. So if property A receives the same benefit as property B, you could argue that the same cost should apply to those two properties. So one thing that could be utilized is, let's say, the size of the connection of property owner A and property owner B can have the same size of connection, there could be an argument that the cost that's apportioned to each property is based on the benefit that's received. So within those two frameworks, there's a whole range of methods that can be utilized in terms of how costs are apportioned, and they fall on that scale of those two frameworks. So the first one is based on the actual frontage of the property. So this method would utilize solely the actual frontage of the property. It's a very easy and quick calculation to come up with. However, what it doesn't do is it doesn't take into account the different shapes or different configurations of properties. The next option that was reviewed was based on the assessed value of the property. This would help to even out some of the extremes that could potentially be seen. However, this value does change from year to year, and the cost could also vary based on using this framework. The other option that was reviewed was using the actual frontage, but then applying a minimum and a maximum value to this number, so that properties with an actual frontage lower than the minimum would pay at least up to the minimum, and actual frontages with higher than the maximum would be reduced back down to the maximum. This is very similar to option one, and does help to balance some of the extremes that may be incurred. What we've got, what we have in the policy right now is the use of taxable frontage with a current set of minimums and maximums. This does help to address the irregularly shaped parcels. The current minimum value is 15.24 meters, and the current maximum value for taxable frontage is 106.68 meters. What is proposed as part of this report and this policy change is an amended minimum and maximum, but maintaining the use of the taxable frontage formula. We believe that this will help to address those irregularly shaped parcels. However, with the amended minimums and maximums, it would help to address some of the concern that was received, particularly with large rural and residential property owners. And finally, the other method that could be utilized is based on an equal share that's on the other end of the spectrum. Most municipalities that we've surveyed use a method that's closer to the cost of construction side of things. Similarly, that's also what the township has used as a historical basis primarily for its local area service projects. So these are the proposed changes to the minimums and maximums that were identified on the previous slide. So for all properties, the minimum was proposed to be changed from 15.24 meters to 15 meters. This is just to eliminate the extra two decimal places behind the 15. The maximum for non-residential was proposed to go from 106.68 to 105 meters. And for rural and residential, to utilize a value of 61 meters. This is similar to the value that's used in Abbotsford for their maximum taxable frontage. So as another example of how this policy change would impact a particular project, we looked at one example here. So in this example, the properties in blue would be industrial properties, so they're labeled I1 to I4. The rural properties are in a magenta color, although the screen color looks like it's more purple here. So those would be rural properties, and then the commercial properties would be in green. So this is a sample project where the total cost is $1 million. The total project cost doesn't change regardless of which policy we utilize. But this table is intended to show the comparison of the existing policy to the proposed policy. So the two left columns show the classification of the property, or the number of the property, as well as the calculated taxable frontage of the property. We won't go through the formula and how that taxable frontage was calculated, that was done previously. The center two columns show the taxable frontage with the minimum and maximum applied, as well as the associated community cost for the current policy. So those center two columns are for what would be included as under the current policy, and then the right two columns would be under the proposed policy. Again, the principal change is the maximum value for the rural properties. They would now have a maximum of 61 meters, as opposed to the maximum of 106.68. The properties that hit the maximum are highlighted in red, in the red text. So what this proposed policy change is it shifts some of the cost burden from the rural properties to the industrial and the commercial properties. As an example, the rural share, or the subtotal for the rural, was $385,000 previously. Under this project would now go down to 343. And correspondingly, the industrial properties would increase from 405,000 to 433, as well as the commercial from 210,000 to 224,000 under this example. A number of housekeeping changes are also proposed as part of the policy review. The first item was with regards to traffic calming. Traffic calming is currently not eligible for a local area service project, however, has been referred to staff in the past, and the questions have been asked in the past with regards to whether traffic calming could be included in the local area service policy. As of right now, it's not recommended for inclusion for a number of reasons. One is it was very difficult to determine a benefiting area in an objective manner. Concern was raised as to whether the whole neighborhood would be deemed benefiting, or whether only those on the fronting street would be deemed benefiting. Staff has heard feedback in that many property owners don't necessarily deem traffic calming as a benefit. Some viewed as a benefit, some viewed as a disbenefit, so it's harder to include in a local area service policy based on a benefit received. The traffic calming policies require that the scope of the project, or the scope of a traffic calming project, is determined through a consultative process, i.e. in consultation with the community itself. However, under the local area service policy, the scope must be determined in advance prior to a petition. This is because the cost must be determined in advance prior to the petition process. So those two policies don't lend themselves to marry themselves to one another very easily. There is a concern that lower priority projects could potentially jump the queue. And finally, the removal threshold within the traffic calming policy, which is at 67%, could potentially result in the issue of residents along a street paying for traffic calming measures through a local area service, whereas the whole neighborhood views it as a disbenefit, and if it didn't go well, voting to remove that traffic calming project that was implemented and being paid for by different residents. Another housekeeping change is to amend the local area service definition to include more than one parcel. So a single parcel project would be done through a private utility extension process and not through a local area service process. The third change, or proposed change, is that the proponent for the local area service project must be willing to have their contact information released. They are the contact person for the petition for the local area service. So just to clarify that, their ID may be released to other property owners who do have questions about their proposed service. The fourth change is with regards to preliminary petition response. To clarify that, staff will provide the proponent with a list of deemed benefiting properties, either a list or a map of deemed benefiting properties. A change to the preliminary process with a threshold being amended from 50% to 60% for a successful preliminary petition. This is to reduce the number of projects that are fairly divided, and then subsequently fall off the threshold at the official petition stage. As well as to provide a notification process for all property owners as to the result of the preliminary petition. This is something that's typically completed, however, is not currently noted in the policy. There's also a notification change for the official petition process, in that residents will be notified as to the meeting date when the construction bylaw is being considered by council for those projects. There's a number of minor wording changes for the delay clause of local area service projects. The cost variance is proposed to be amended from 10% to 15%. So this number comes into play in the event that there's a difference in the estimated cost at the time of construction versus the time when the petition was circulated. So the current policy has a 10% number. It's proposed to amend that to 15%. The reason for this change is that at the time of petition, the project has not been designed, there hasn't been a detailed design completed, and the scope is not as well defined. So it's proposed to amend that cost variance percentage to 15%, as well as to utilize both the Class A estimate, as well as the construction bids when determining that percentage. For sidewalk costs that are completed through a local area service along an arterial roadway, it's proposed to amend the policy for that if the sidewalk is only built on one side of the roadway, on arterials, that the property owners would pay 100% for those that are on the side of the sidewalk construction. Currently, the policy says those that are on the side of the sidewalk construction will pay 65, and the other side will pay 35. For arterial roadways, it's proposed to amend that to 100% for those fronting, and then for locals and collectors to leave it at the 65-35% split. And finally, the last change is with regards to construction by township forces for local area service projects whereby the township crews could complete these, and as we don't charge a profit margin on these types of projects, to allow construction by township forces with under a value of $100,000, whereby all projects completed outside of that amount would be to external contractors through a tender process. And I'll take any questions that may be there.
Thank you very much for that. Counsel Whitmarsh.
Thank you for the report. Lots of information there to digest. I'm wondering if we could just go back to the example that you had, right there, yeah, on this proposed apportionment. So it seems to me that in this one, what's happening is that the larger properties in the rural area, in a sense, are getting a break, and those smaller properties in the rural area are going to make up that difference, or at least a portion of that difference. So even in your example, everyone's prices, everyone's cost goes up, except for the one large property, which is decreased substantially. So even though the amount shows that this is decreasing by $42,000, $52,000 of it is actually made up of one property. So I'm wondering if there's sort of a sense that the larger properties have been paying an unfair apportionment, and this is meant to adjust it? And those smaller properties are now going to pay what's sort of deemed as more fair? Is that what's happening here? Because you can change numbers however we want, but there's obviously sort of an understanding or a philosophy behind why we do it. And is there a sense that these smaller rural properties have not been paying their share, and so this is a way to try and get them to do that?
Yeah, I would categorize it as there's been a concern by some of the larger rural properties and some of the larger residential properties that they're paying an unproportionate high amount of the share of the total project cost. And they've been concerned with the high bills that have been received through the local area service estimates or projects that were completed. So this was reviewed as a way to what could be done to help minimize some of those costs, or to lower those costs and potentially spread them out a little bit. It does spread out the costs, both to the industrial and commercial properties, as well as to the smaller-than-maximum rural properties as well, mainly because the taxable frontage rate goes up because the total taxable frontage is smaller. The total taxable frontage rate in this case went from 1267 to 1363, as shown in the bottom of the table. So for those that fall under the maximum, they do pay a higher taxable frontage rate.
Right. So like, again, in this example, if we look at the larger property, even though he is, you know, roughly 40% larger than three of the properties, or two of the properties, about 40% larger, he's actually going to pay the same. So R5 and R2 are about 40% of, are around 60% of the size of his property, or this example, and yet they'll pay the same. So I'm not necessarily, you know, opposed to any of it. I just wanted to make, to clarify that that's what we're, staff is suggesting, is that even though the property might be 40% larger, it's okay, and we agree that they've been paying too much, and so we're happy with having them pay the same even if they have a much larger piece of property.
Yeah, I would say it's intended to help address some of the concern from the large property owners that they're paying a very high portion of the project.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Anderson.
Yes, thank you very much. We can stay on this slide, actually. I find it interesting, and because this one, from my perspective, really balances out three different types of costing here. But I'm wondering how that works out. So if you have a minimum and a maximum, but you didn't have a commercial, rural, and industrial together, what if they were all rural? What would that look like?
So in terms of when all the properties are the same class, the same minimums and maximums would apply. So for those properties that are larger, or have a larger taxable frontage than the maximum, that cost would get spread out amongst the remaining properties.
Okay, so there wouldn't be any instance, I just was concerned, where does the underage go? So there isn't any, it just gets distributed more evenly amongst them, based on this perception that perhaps larger properties have been paying a disproportionate amount. I get that reasoning. My other question actually has occurred to me, and it's beyond, I guess, the scope of what you've looked at this time. I have just wondered from time to time, based on relatively successful local area service, and to the degree to which, if it fails marginally, because I know you bumped up the number now to make sure that that's less likely to happen, but if it fails marginally, that somebody can't come by in the next month or so and try and re-initiate the whole process, is that something that we've considered?
Yeah, currently in the policy, there is no formal mechanism with regards to when it could be brought back. That's not something that's currently in the policy. Typically, we try to work with prospective proponents and say if it's failed very recently that we either amend it and include a different area, or try to encourage them to find a way to meet the service in another manner.
I guess that that's a reasonable solution. It just seems, though, that sometimes there might be other properties that are adjoining there that, you know, they could be pressured somewhat to join into something they don't necessarily really have that much of an interest in, just in order to achieve that result.
It is the one reason why the official petition is done as a mail-in ballot by the township, so that you don't have the proponent pushing the individual property owners. Property owners have the ability to send in their ballots directly to the municipal.
Okay, so it anonymizes the whole process. Okay, thank you very much.
Counsel Fox.
Yeah, so we've kind of used the same process for traffic calming as an LAS, in somewhat the same process in the past. So you're maintaining that traffic calming should be done exclusive to this particular report and recommendation and policy. So it would just remain the same as a standalone? Is that what we're going to see with traffic calming?
So currently, traffic calming has not been completed by a local area service process. It's completed through the traffic calming policy that's funded by the township Langley. The current policy does not have traffic calming included in the local area service policy, and it's not proposed as part of the proposed local area service policy either. So it would remain the same under the current framework of the existing traffic calming policy.
Okay. So we would get an annual report of what the priorities are with traffic calming. So we would get an annual report of what the priorities are with traffic calming and then deal with it at budget time related to what the the number of projects that we want to complete, as opposed to doing something based upon would would there be the opportunity? And I'm thinking on forty four A Avenue, forty two A, forty four A, forty two A in Murrayville, where we implied that the developer needs to canvass the neighborhood to find out if traffic calming was what the neighborhood wanted to, you know, control traffic speeds in that area. So how would that fit into the traffic calming policy? Is that something that's covered in there? When council makes a decision that traffic calming would be included? I realize this report isn't about traffic calming, but I ask the question anyway.
So with regards to that particular project, my understanding is that staff are reviewing the the process for that that project. That one would be, as my understanding is, funded through that development project, so it would not be funded through either a local area service project or by the township through the traffic calming policy. So it'd be entirely separate, but intended to follow the intent of the traffic calming policy as closely as possible.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Your Worship. Counsel Long.
Thanks, Your Worship. And it's along the same thing. I know this is not about that, but why wouldn't we put traffic calming in LAS? It's the neighborhood that wants it. And and that particular situation, yeah, it was part of the reading. We said traffic calming should go in, the developer should pay for it, so that's fine. But in existing neighborhoods where people, let's say neighborhoods where the schools are or whatever, the real playgrounds, and the and the neighborhood want it, why wouldn't we let them pay for it?
So there's a number of concerns with implementing traffic calming as part of a local area service process. The principal concern is trying to determine who benefits from the traffic calming. So in one one scenario, you could say that only the people that are on the street benefit from it, the other idea being that everyone who's in the neighborhood could potentially benefit from traffic calming in terms of slower speeds going through the neighborhood.
Well, not not really. Be the opposite, actually, because the folks that are on the streets with no traffic calming are going to get all that extra traffic. But maybe I'm going to answer it for you. Is it because if there if there's an LAS initiated for traffic calming, it could be on a street we don't want traffic calming on? Is that what?
That's one of the concerns is that that lower priority locations could jump the queue of higher priority locations. There is only so many resources to to implement these types of projects. So that could be one of the one of the concerns. There's and there's a number of concerns with doing traffic calming through a local area service process.
So when this report came forward and it's not included, did you do you think? Did you anticipate the council might want to throw that in? And if so, what did you have in mind?
Your worship, perhaps I could interject. Staff do not recommend and and in fact would would suggest that it would not be appropriate to include traffic calming as part of the local area service policy because of the the reasons that Mr. Welfing explained. It is very difficult to objectively establish a benefiting area for a traffic calming policy. And that's the basis of how you apportion costs based on a local area service policy. So you can imagine if 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 you were to include a traffic calming policy as a traffic calming as part of a local area service policy, that you you may get the majority of the residents within what we might believe as engineers or planners technically to be the benefiting area, then you could have people coming forward and arguing that that they don't want it, and they don't in fact receive a benefit from it, because it's very difficult to to actually determine benefit in a in a rationalized and 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 supported way. In other words, it's not like a sewer or roadworks that actually fronts a property where you can actually say now you're benefiting from it. Traffic calming does not necessarily equate to benefit. And if it does, then where do you determine the benefit actually lies? That's part of the 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 challenge. The second part is, as again, as Mr. Welfing said, it is, I forgot what the second one was. I lost my train of thought, Mr. Welfing.
I think it's with regards to how you determine the scope of the project itself. So the the traffic calming policy requires that they or includes that the the scope of the project is is done through a community consultation process. So we we canvass the neighborhood and we see which options may be most favorable.
Yeah, thank you. And and the other one is regarding the removal of traffic calming. As as counsel is aware, the policy, the traffic calming policy does provide for not just implementation, but also removal of of traffic calming measures that were previously implemented if the majority of the residents actually ask for it. So you can imagine if if it was paid for as part of local area service, and then the township would have to actually pay for removal of something that the residents paid for. So that creates challenges and anomalies as well.
And just to just to close up on that, this is the way it would be all over in other municipalities too? Or are there are there some interesting other formulas that other municipalities look at? And maybe if there are, we could hear about those.
Your worship, we've looked at a a lot of jurisdictions with respect to the local area service policies. I don't believe that there are traffic calming policies quite similar as ours, nor do I believe there there are many municipalities that have traffic calming policies. We haven't looked into it. That's just my my intuition telling me that traffic calming is something that's kind of unique to the township. It's not just us that that have this issue. However, I don't think many municipalities have a policy that talks about when, under what conditions, and and have a process for traffic calming measures. However, local area service policies is completely different, that is universally implemented or actually adopted throughout the Lower Mainland anyway by by most of the municipalities, if not all.
Thank you. Don't see any other questions. I've got a question. The sixty percent rule for the unofficial petition. Do you have a sense of what percent or how many we get that kind of are between fifty and sixty percent come through the process and then fail in the official petition?
I don't have those numbers off the top of my head.
I know what happens.
There are a number that are very close to the fifty percent threshold, however, though, so.
Yeah, and then subsequently fail.
Yeah, one vote changes and and they can fail.
Okay, thanks. Well, thank you very much for that report, and appreciate it. It was very informative. Thank you. That's the next item. We go to F one. It's okay. You're not, yeah, you know, when you're the acting mayor, next. So now we're going to move to reports to council. F one, local area service program update, and I could have a motion, please. Counsel Whitmarsh, second by Counsel Fox. Now, any discussion regarding F one? Seeing none, I'll call a question on F one. And it carries unanimously. Move on to minutes of committees, and there are one, two, three minutes. Oh, sorry, we're going to start with H one. H one's Agriculture Advisor Heritage, yes, and Recreation Culture. So Counsel Qualley moves receipt. Seconder is Counsel Arneson. And any discussion on receipt? Seeing none, I'll call a question on H one. Carries unanimously. There are one recommendation out of the Heritage Advisor Committee, and Counsel Long, are you moving? Okay, certainly moved by Counsel Long. Second by Counsel Fox. Counsel Long.
Well, I'm, yes, I just wanted to make counsel aware of what happened here. We did a number of research efforts on these these two requested signs, and then we found out there were some other pioneers' marker signs that were missing. So I guess we would like to get them put back. I mean, there's no no real designation required. They're just missing signs that should go in. But these other the other one here was very interesting, the research we did way back to the late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds, where these particular pioneers were in the area. So it's going to be beneficial in our whole program of heritage markers.
Thank you. Counsel Fox?
Yeah, so pioneer markers on two twenty fourth from sixty fourth to sixty first. So this is just honoring the name Larmen. Is that correct? So you're not talking about this report here, which says that we should have pioneer markers on two twenty fourth, identifying it by its historic name? Is that what I'm understanding? This is specific to a house or an area. Two twenty fourth Street North, a Telegraph Trail for the name Holding. So we're just doing two?
Yeah, but it does respond to the request in that document.
Well, this seems to be more general. I mean, if you go through Surrey, you see where actually there's a pioneer marker in North Bluff Road, which is sixteen thousand. So you're not recommending we do anything with this?
Well, there is a recommendation in that document, which was referred to the Heritage Committee, to look at the request there, which was for, I don't have that document here, but it doesn't it mention Holding in there? And Larmen, I believe it does.
Well, I'm I'm just, yeah, but that's pretty specific. So that's all we're doing right now.
And that's that's exactly right. We took that that specific request, researched it, and made this recommendation to council. In terms of pioneer markets in general, I I I think we'll do the same thing. If council gets a request for a specific area and you refer it, we'll do the research and come up with a recommendation to council as we've done here. But the other two are simply missing ones that have been designated a long time ago.
Thank you. Counsel Arneson?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship, and through you to Counselor Long. So I'm just wondering, since his work has been done and it seems to be a list, are we aware that there is available funding that is available? Should these be identified and endorsed by council on an ongoing basis?
I I believe that there already is in our in our heritage market program, so there's no budgeting requirements.
And that's that's sufficient, okay. And because I was thinking about the potential for other levels of government that might, you know, have a granting process or funding.
I think this is just the simple sign is that is accommodated in-house, from what I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. All right, I'll call a question on each. Seeing no further discussion. Carries unanimously. Is there any other business? Motion terminated. Counsel Whitmarsh, second by Counsel Fox. All those in favor, opposed and carried. Thank you.